Great, good evening everyone, it is six thirteen on Monday, September the sixteen. Scott Stevenson, the chairman of the school committee, looking to bring to order the South of Collins, Grandville Regional School District School Committee meeting for September the sixteen. Can I get a motion entered in the meeting? Can I get a? Can I get a show of hand? Enter in the meeting. Aaron, the director of the motion passes seven zero zero. Alright, welcome back everybody. It is a brand new school year, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, we have all our school committee members here. Magnolia is here and we have a new, we're gonna get introduced to our new person from the school, the student representative here tonight. We are going to move through our, our agenda here as efficiently as we can. Can I get everybody to stand up? Okay. And set the agenda. We've got some meeting from four eight, we've got some home education proposals. We've got an out of state field trip to the convention center and some fundraisers. This is the speaking hour, where we're holding a piece section, anybody got any issues with that? Warrens? I don't, we have Warrens, if we do, we have some Warrens here. We can make sure that we take care of that tonight. That'd be great, correspondence, I do not. Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan, do we have anything for us tonight?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Alright, we're gonna fight for the record. I don't know. Student advisory report. You're up.
Okay, so I will first start off with the principal's advisory committee that we have established. They'll regularly meet, usually on the news of perhaps schoolroom meetings, sorry. It consists of myself, Josh Raven, who is who is the junior student representative. You're also on the, what's it called? No, the Western Mass.
Uh, Western Mass student representative.
Yes, the West- yes, the Western Mass student representative. So we have two Western Mass student representatives, Josh and Connor Martin. Connor Martin also represents Western Mass as a full on student state representing council. It's really not fun. And then we'll be bringing up probably two sophomores girls, they'll definitely be sophomores, that will also join our meetings to provide their perspective on students. Provide any other info for the presentations. And then as I move up, we, they'll also move up, hopefully. On the first couple of days of school, all the students at the high school, whether safety and learning presentations during the first couple of days during the home group. So everyone's clear on safety procedures, we must follow it now, whereas when the bullying policy was tolerated and the punishments. Coming up, there will be student safety presentation for student drivers through the SRL Olson proactive, uh, proactive measure to address driver safety in the parking lot and on the road. Each grade also has their class meetings at the first couple of days. The, everyone will now have class meetings orderly to make sure everyone's up to date, if you have your opinion on the activities we're doing, how we execute it. I basically just feel like, I think this is a good idea, why don't we do this? Yeah, yeah, until everyone goes in board. Seeing the sunrise on Friday, we didn't really get a sunrise, it was pretty far, we didn't. We had some yard games to pull off pictures, you can see that on the senior class twenty-five count and then new high school Instagram account, which I'll get into in a second. We also did some parking spaces event, you'll see a lot of the Instagram. Um, we have new high school Instagram, it's XRS underscore Rams, SRF or under, yeah, sorry. Which is run by our assistant principal, Rue, to keep things under control. So it's still a little slow. We will post any new announcements, like school activities and promote some things we participate in around the school. Like some students may assign more specific hours. It will make things easier for high school parents to see when their kids are up to date with the COVID, not high school, instead just moving along with the district. We have a fall play, it will be twelve A with jurors, the audition jury will be called tomorrow. The phone logs have been doing pretty good, the students have been walking rhythm. And we had a couple of issues, but teachers and admin have been taking care of it. We've introduced it today and made it over sixty. With sports volleyball has a game tonight at Smithville, both golf and sports soccer, both those come on for the extended time, I suppose. Girls soccer.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, they're playing Newark, yeah.
And Bill hockey by Great Will last Thursday, they won eight to nothing, very impressive. Prospecting has a game tomorrow, uh, at Hopkins, we found in the parkway, it's a boys' angle, there's a couple of different things going, so I can do. Make sure you follow the XRS Rams account, at South of Rams, and the Booster Club Instagram, which is XRS underscore Booster underscore Club. We're also looking for student volunteers to help, I think we'll see where the Rams will do. But yeah, that's it.
Very good.
Yep.
And your grill soccer team, just to let everybody know, they are three and O's for the first time in, I don't know, forever. Last week, they beat Dammers and Munson. Munson was the, as of last Thursday, still the number one team in Western Mass, and he took them down forty-two. So they played North Hampton Wednesday, so if we need to bring people there to get involved. If we get everybody there, that would be fantastic, because they're, they're being very, very welcome. Alright, fantastic. What do we have next? Educational presentation.
Question.
Oh, yes.
So Josh is our new replacement, or our new addition, I should say. Now, you said substitute, that maybe we have a third?
Yes, so Connor Martin is, I mean, is a part of the Western Mass.
I got you, so Josh, you will be with us the majority of the time along that way.
Because Connor's starting as two representatives, you know, a lot on his plate right now, but he wasn't interested, so he honestly wanted.
That's, I think that's fantastic. Two, three? Definitely a great group of people, if you're setting the bar really high, but I know, you've got two coming in, so that's good.
Then you'll have six, that's true.
You know, it's all good. Alright. You're up. Ms. Jordan, you have something you want to introduce to our time?
Mine too. I do also want to take that, Magnolia talking about principal advisory council. It's, it's really that we have, right in this time, we have a group of students, or have several students who are really interested and invested in, not necessarily their traditional leadership roles, but in the goals, getting involved in outside of our school and representing our school in the broader district. So the Western Mass Regional Association of School Councils, that's Josh and Connor. And then from that, Connor is now representing that group at the state level. So we're, so we're broadening out and the, the intention of bringing them all together with myself, everybody, is so that they can bring what's going on there back to, to our team and we can have those discussions and then Josh and Magnolia will come here and represent and bring that, this back. So it's, everyone who's part of this is involved in some bigger things outside of our school district and they're bringing it back. And, and what I said to them today is, I'm looking to them to help make a better leader as well, like, right? What they're learning out beyond and what they can, their voice with media and what we're doing in this middle district. So that's, that's what it's born of and just clarifying points for like, but it's a small group and so we want to bring on a couple of sophomore students who are interested in this kind of work and, and interested in putting, making them commit, because they all are attending meetings outside of school and some of them have required travel or evenings or whatever. But, so that's one thing, and the second thing as important is, we have a new vice assistant principal at the regional school. This is Dr. Diana Bonneville. She comes to us with a wealth of experience in education, from North Hampton to Padley, to South Padley, to West Handed, Hampshire Regional. She's worked in all of the roles. And coincidentally, I will add, and it is completely coincidentally, that my family of women, mother, me, daughter, have all been in the school where she's working now at this point. At her, some randomly, my mom worked at North Hampton, she was there. My daughter was a student at South Padley when she was there and now she's here with us and that's also an interesting coincidence that we landed together.
So not going anywhere else. As long as Marie is here, we've got a staff, so.
But it's been a great opening, she's been a great member of the team, a very kind of calm and stable, I mean, she brings a bunch of great experience. So I'm excited to be able to turn to her and, and tap into that.
My sweet family.
Well, welcome, we're very excited that you're here.
Well, it's been a great beginning of the school year, I'm very impressed with Serena's leadership and what a great team, and successfully had teachers, and I think telling all the students, they're the most polite bunch of students I've met, swear. So they're just so kind and respectful, so, yeah, I love coming to work there, everybody, so thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
One question, Ms. Jordan, before you leave. When Magnolia was saying that you're gonna lead the each of the class quarters, so that they have opportunities to ask questions and bring things forward. In between those quarters, do the students have a vehicle in which they can pose questions in a drop box or to carry things or something like that, if they got any ideas and come up in between?
There is, we have a student council that's, that's a place, that's a primary place, but they also all have class officers. They have these members of the advisory council and I have had a fair amount of students who are comfortable to come in, either to myself or to Mr. Larry and Miss Bonnie. The quarterly class meetings are an opportunity for the class to come together and it's, yeah, but I'm not necessarily setting the agenda, the class officers, the students will primarily set the agenda. If we have something to put in based on things that we're observing, we will participate in the agenda. But one of the things that students asked for last year was more opportunity to come together as a class around issues, per se. So now we have sort of two avenues for it, right? We have home rooms now where that, not on an everyday basis, but periodically, we might present some information or have some discussion that we need. But then in the bigger class, quarterly as part of the class meeting. So historically, class meeting has been whenever there's a need, you just call one. We're here, we're, we're dedicating four times a year where that's absolutely happening and so people can be thinking ahead about what we want on the agenda for that. That was also born from student recommendation.
So what if somebody's not comfortable bringing that concern or a recommendation with class officer? Is there another for them to be able to anonymously or put something in a, in a box or anything like that? Or, because they, you could have somebody that's a great idea, but is not comfortable bringing that idea forward. We have a lot of advisors.
There, in our building, there's a lot of avenues for it, but that doesn't guarantee.
I don't want to make sure we miss any of them.
It doesn't guarantee that everyone's.
So who are you envisioning facilitating the quarterly meetings?
Um, the, the class officers and the class advisors primarily.
So basically student-led?
Student-led. Um, but like I said, we're new doing it, I mean, I'm saying we're new doing it, so how it evolves exactly, I'm not entirely sure, but we've created the space for it. But I anticipate it will also be a space for, if we're observing, observing something at a school level and we need to address the class, that that will absolutely be part of, of it. Of our ongoing, of all the ongoing work, right? So we have a place for teachers to address the things and we have a place for administrators and class officers to address groups. So we'll see how it goes and we'll report out, we're, these guys actually will be the ones who will report out, yeah.
Well, that's great. Alright, any questions for us?
No.
No.
I'm thrilled to be here.
Well, fantastic.
I'm sure as soon as I leave, I'll have a million.
That's okay. Mail addresses, you can shoot them to us whenever you want. Anybody have any questions for Diana or for the short? Great, well, thank you very much.
Alright.
Thanks for giving your time today.
You're welcome.
Great. Ms. Sullivan, do you have anything from a superintendent report perspective?
No, I do have the enrollment numbers that were on the agenda that I own shared.
Yeah.
So our total enrollment K to twelve this year is one thousand two hundred and forty-five students. That is down from one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven students last year.
So can you repeat that loss again? There's a thirty-two student loss.
Yes.
We know where most of those went.
Um, no, but that's a good question, I don't, it looks like on this paper, I don't, I only have this year's grade by grade enrollment, not last year's.
So I'm gonna guess that it's a whole school loss, but if we could get that data, I think that that would be beneficial.
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing that it looks like I'm supposed to talk about is opening of school.
Yeah.
So I will report that the opening day was successful, we had secretary, secretary of education, Pat Upweiler, who gave a welcoming speech to our faculty, of food service, our school nutrition department, made us a delicious breakfast, greeted us on the dock there and made supply of delicious food that we had on our very sunny, although hot, back to school picnic that was hosted by the school committee and the, and the district administrators. We had only the one professional learning day at the beginning of the school year this year, we will be doing two in January. It was just the way that the calendar fell this year, it created sort of an awkward situation where we would be opening the schools during that vacation week for one day. So rather than do that, we decided to do two PD days in January, but it was a successful day. We did, we continued with our science of reading module on reading and writing connection. We had anti-defamation league out to support us in implementing some anti-bias curriculum that we're using to supplement our social emotional learning curriculum. And then we had a very successful team building activity that was put together by Ms. Jordan. Whit and Britt came out and ran them through the paces of, of a pretty rigorous obstacle course. But it was a real opportunity to, you know, have fun together and, and build their team. So, and then the kids came back the day after that and the principals all reported out at a recent admin team meeting that it was a very organized opening and that the students did a very nice job transitioning back to school.
I wanted to be doing that obstacle course, I saw that set up there, it looked pretty fun.
It was pretty fun and it really turned out to be a great. I'll, I'll just share this, this sort of, if you're interested, is this little piece. None of the teachers knew we were doing it until the evening before, or till the, the day before, and when I told them to come to work in shorts and sneakers and I would have a shirt for them. And, and so some of them looked up what was going to be happening and the piece was that, that some people the morning of the event were very professionally looking to get out of doing it. Reminding me of whatever physical ailment or concern or whatever piece. And in, they were in teams and the, the message was, you need to work as a team and figure out how you're gonna get everyone through. And so it might mean it looks this way, or it looks that way, someone goes twice, whatever, whatever. What was amazing to me about our teaching staff at the regional school is, once it got underway and I was standing across the way, manning one of the stations, those same folks who felt like afraid to try it, afraid to do it, were right there doing it and all their teammates were helping them physically, helping them, you know, encouraging the whole thing. And every single staff member completed the course with their team. And then two, two groups of people wanted to do a competitive round two, which was fun, but but later in the day, that segue, the, the conversation or the educational tie, in case anyone's curious, it was fun, but it also was about putting yourself in that place of discomfort and how, how we help each other through that and what does that feel like and look like when students are, are in that space as well? And how we encourage them and support them through that key goals and all things. And it was, it was very palpable, we literally just did it through, you know, you could talk about being uncomfortable, but when you literally just felt that discomfort and worked your way through, so it, it came together in a really great way. And, and I think it was what our school needed to start this, so it was time and, and resources lost, lost bad.
So peer pressure went for the doctors.
It does. Give everybody a T-shirt and play some music and we're good.
But we should have the school. So did you end up having a second round that was competitive?
Well, we did, the second round was, so we assigned the teams initially based on teams that work together in the school. So there was no, it was solely based on if you're in a PLC together or you're a team, you know, a little school team. And then a clerical team and, you know, all of that. Every single person who works in our building, with the exception of custodial staff, participated in this, our work assigned in this event. So, so it was interesting then when we needed water and I had no one to radio back up at the school, so I ran up there and got the car and brought it down. It was just kind of this moment, like, there's nobody supporting, because everyone's supporting each other again. But, what was your, I'm sorry, what question?
Second round.
Well, yeah, so when we broke and, and it was, you know, a lot of people were tired, people made their own teams. And there were two groups of five who went for a competitive round two and did it so, so fast and so, so aggressively. They changed some of the, the brain puzzles, so it didn't, it wasn't like they were repeating the same obstacle, but yeah, we had to. And then there was some claiming of, of being the winner of that one. Right, right, that was really the battle of the brawn, not the brain on that one, I think.
So a little survivor was going in there, I suppose, very cool. Alright, awesome. Okay, policy.
Although I didn't see, I looked at it, yeah, I didn't see, I believe that we had an email regarding upcoming school committee policy. Do you remember where we are on the policy made on me and Jay?
We're somewhere in, I think we should be able to finish it this year.
We're tied, so we can't go on, I want you guys to not look up.
But it only goes to K, right?
I don't know, section's high, so.
That's, we're, we're.
It doesn't go all the way in.
No, no, that's what we, we've got multiple, so. The only thing that I will reach out to Liz is find out where's A, and B, C, and all those things will be approved, so that we can actually get it to everybody who can prove these things, get this thing updated.
And my question is, like, when we are approving, deciding to accept masks version?
Yeah.
Okay? If masks then makes updates to its version, then what's the procedure? Like, I know we get notified, right? But do we have, are we live linking to masks and does that automatically update? Or do we get a notification, hey, mask has, has updated their policy, you need your policy, so they have another eye on it, like, like that? But once, once we, because this is already.
You've got some clues, question.
Yeah.
We'll find out from them, I know once this is all done, our policies will no longer be on our, it will be on our website, but it's not gonna be posted by our website. It's gonna be electronic versions that are at, that masks kind of oversee them. So whether those updates happen automatically, that's a, I, I have a feeling, I have a feeling they won't, they won't update unless we approve them.
Correct.
For all of us. So they may send us an update, but that could just be, we get the update, we send it out to everybody, we put it on the, we put it on the agenda and we approve. So we can find out if it's, and we'll get that answer for the, Aaron's gonna write it back then, so we, we absolutely. Good questions. Alright. Let's see, where are we at here? Action items, okay, so I am, instead of putting Ms. Sullivan on, on the list here, I'm gonna go through and do the action items tonight to keep us going here, so move to approve, set the agenda, items listed above.
Seven.
Any impressions on that? Can I get a show of hands with group's motion? Aaron, the director of show, the motion passes seven zero zero. Okay. Move to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five district strategic plan recommended.
Seven.
Any questions on that? The copy is in our booklet and we've seen, talked about this. Without any questions, can I get a show of hands approval? Aaron, let the record show, the motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, so we're gonna, so move to approve, post members of the advisory committee to the school committee recommended.
Seven.
Okay, so we are gonna have a little conversation about this before everybody votes. So over the summer, everybody's aware, we had Aaron open up to the public people to be able to apply, to indicate they would be open to be part of this advisory committee to the school committee that we announced and voted that we were gonna put together at the end of last year. What we did is I met with the superintendent, I ended up meeting with a couple of representatives from Southwick, I met with Ted and with Pam to go over the people that had sent in their recommendation. And we've got an overall recommendation list here that we're gonna have the entire committee vote on tonight. So what we've got so far, we've got, we've kind of got a nice little rounded out setup here. So we've got two educators that we were able to, to identify, Colonel Roberts and Stephanie Richmond. We've got two students, Asher Rose and Hayden Braceway. We have they are.
They are and they aren't, they're also district employees.
Yeah, so they've got, they've got multiple, we didn't really have like eighty-five people in the class. We have Nicole Parker, who is the new CAO for the town of Southwick. We have, then we have one, two, three, four, five. We've got five parents and then a community member from Southwick. We've got Ann Ritten, who's a community member. We've got Megan Banks, who's a parent, oh, sorry, she's from Grandville. Sam Chevalier, Sarah, and Lilia. I'm sorry, Sophia. Spackles. Spackles, I apologize. Kristen Seymour, Anna Johnson are the parents from Southwick. We have, from Grandville, I have three parents, Christine Chazinski, Megan Banks, and Doc Early. And then from Tallinn, I have one community member, Judy Stanley, and then a parent, Lawrence Heard. And then we have Allison Lopez, from a community member, who we're adding. Yeah, no, I said that, no, Lawrence Heard, and then Jude Stanley. So we have a total of four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Fourteen, eighteen? Seventeen, seventeen people on the committee. Questions, comments?
So I do think that the district should be commended in the way they put this out and, and there were, this went out in multiple different ways, emails, texts, various notifications in, in multiple times, which I thought was really good messaging. And as a result, we, correct if I'm wrong, but we actually got a, a very large response.
Yeah.
Larger than we anticipated, which is amazing, it indicates that people in all three towns are interested in being involved and having a voice, which I think is amazing. You know, and I think that the challenge was making the group big enough to be inclusive, but small enough to be functional. And that in reviewing the applications and the statements of interest as to why people were interested in being involved, we were really looking for a great variety of people from a wealth of different backgrounds that could kind of represent our entire community. And, and so that's how these eighteen age groups, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, however, were selected. But I do want to stress with thanking the all who applied and, you know, just indicated that they were interested, because I, I just think that that is.
We have lots of people that were interested, but I think this is a, a great step. Now, what we'll do is we will notify all of them, probably all of them are watching. But we will notify all of them that they're gonna be part of the committee, then we'll pick sort of a preliminary start date. I will probably go there, because we give them, definitely in, in moving forward, but the, but really the agenda, how many times they need, we're originally gonna leave up to them.
They should choose their leaders.
The whole, what I love for them to be able to do is sort of, once later in this term or beginning of this, of this, of the year, and then later on, be able to have a couple of opportunities to bring some ideas, recommendations to us, so that we can hear and listen, see what they come up with. Give us an opportunity to, to talk with this further in the discussion and the improvement to make sure that everyone, our kids at the school feels that they're welcome, that they're included, that they don't feel that they've got nowhere to go. We've got people that are even reach out to, and very, it's nice to hear that new teachers or vice principals are saying that our kids are polite and that they're being welcomed, I think that's gonna happen. So I think this is a great start, it's just an opportunity. Um, so I think this is a great start. It gives us an opportunity to build and follow through on things that we identified at the end of last year. Anybody got any other comments? Alright, so can I get a show of hands to set this group with seventeen people to be part of this committee? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Alright. Yeah, he may be quick tonight because I think we've got a lot of meetings. Uh, negotiations. Oh, sorry, hang on, I got, yeah, I got two more. Okay, move to approve the amendment, the superintendent Jennifer Willard's contract for performing director of finance and operations responsibilities. From eighty-five, twenty-four through six thirty-five, twenty-five, and or until the replacement can be hired recommended.
Um, Jenny, could you just give us an update on where we are with this? Because at last we heard you were gonna kind of spearhead, um, and kind of take a look at what, what we had for applicants and go from there. Um, so, uh, can you just kind of give us a little update on where we are?
Um, so we have, we reposted the position because someone that we have been hoping, um, had already taken another position by the time we call. So we have two, um, candidates to apply in the second round of the job posting. And, um, the interviews are scheduled for Wednesday, uh, September twenty-fifth.
No.
Uh, one at three thirty and the one.
Twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Tuesday for twenty-four, thank you, Rob. Um, and we'll do one at three thirty and one at four fifteen. And then we will hopefully be able to put someone forward to the school committee following that, uh, that first round.
And how many members does the interview committee consist of?
It's the same as, as the, the policy recommends, it's two parents, um, two school committee members, two teachers chosen by the teachers. Um, to, and I think one administrator, which will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Alright, sorry, last one we've got here. Move to approve the district account memorandum agreement for Jessica Cody. For performing director of finance and operations responsibilities from eight-five, twenty-four through six thirty, twenty-five. Or until a replacement can be hired recommended. Questions on that? I think the question is the answer, so, uh, can I get a show of hands to approve this motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Now, subcommittee. Negotiations, we haven't had a meeting set up yet, right? Okay, and we have.
Where are we?
Their contracts, the teachers are up this year, correct?
I thought we did have something.
Oh, we do, we, we, no, you're right, we do have some negotiation items set up coming up at the end of. You have September? Okay, fantastic. There we go. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that up because I forgot about. Alright, finance, we have not had a finance committee meeting. Uh, we will have to try to set that up. Um, I'll talk to the superintendent next week to see if we can get something set up on that. Uh, LPVAC collaborative.
Um, the first meeting was until September, I think.
Okay. I do know, because I've had it, I'm sure you guys have heard, that I have had some emails, phone calls about some struggles, challenges with respect to. Uh, busing times, um, for LPVAC, it is, it's been raised. I brought it up to the superintendent and she has already called the director over at LPVAC. Uh, I know that that is being a discussion, I don't know whether it's been resolved yet, but, okay. That, we've got some kids that are getting picked up extremely early and then we, the way they got this set up, that they are sitting around waiting. For schools to start, so we're gonna try to see.
So I was gonna save this for, for new business to bring up some, a couple of different busing issues that I wanted you to take to LPV E C, Erica.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you want me to bring it up now or just.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I, you know, I mean, I think that you guys are talking about the, the C tech busing issues. Um, and, and there's another piece to this that you may not be aware of that was brought to me from, um, because this is particularly the Randall issue. Um, and, and I'm looking for some clarification on this one myself. Um, this is for the students that go out of district to Westfield Vocational Tech School. Um, for some reason, they're being picked up extremely early. Um, we're talking like five twenty in the morning for, ridiculous. Um, and this is at least a half an hour earlier than, um, what was done last year. And I am unclear as to why this is. I'm getting a lot of finger pointing that it's somebody else's problem. Um, and, and so I'm unclear, and I mean, I know that they're out of district, but I'm pretty sure we're still responsible for the ride transportation. Which means that it's being provided by LPV E C. So my number one question is, why this change? Why is it a half an hour earlier than it was last year? Who is responsible for this and how can we change it and prevent it from happening in the future? Um, and then related to busing issue, that this is a completely separate issue. Um, but clearly drivers are still a concern, uh, because that is why we had some athletic events. Um, you know, canceled or home calling, um, because we have sick drivers and no replacements. So our kids aren't being able to get to their athletic and their extra.
So that's the reason that, that things were proposed and, proposed, right?
Yes, at least for one of them, I know, maybe both.
Can you say that real quick again? One of the sporting events, like, they didn't have lots of to get them there, the driver was.
Only one was concerned about the issue.
Well, I can't be definitively of it, but when I, um, spoke to Mr. George this afternoon, he said it would, he said that those comments were because of. Of transportation, but he didn't specify whether it was one or both. He said we had a couple of post comments, it was due to transportation.
Right, so I know at least one of them wants transportation on our end. I don't know if they both were transportation on our end. Or one was transportation on the other school's end, because again, these are issues that all school districts are dealing with. Um, but clearly busing continues to be, um, a challenge for us with LPV E C. Um, and I know that that's part of their challenges, but you know.
Yeah, Erica, along that line, if you can reach out to whoever your contact is over there.
Yeah.
Ask them how many of the other districts had transportation issues that canceled their sporting activities? I want to make sure we're not the only ones getting caught in this. I have a feeling we're not, but I'd be like, I, I would like to have that confirmed. Um, and just let everybody know, I did, like I said, talk to Superintendent Willard about this. I've already requested a meeting. Um, talk about the busing issues. If there's a couple other items we need to do, then we can certainly add that to the agenda.
I, I do know that they're having a major, um, driver shortage. And even more than years have passed, and what's happening is they're paying for drivers to get their C B Ls. And it's, and it should be expensive, it's like four or five grand, something like that. And then there, there's no way to keep them or retain any of those drivers. So the other drivers want to not get paid during the summer hours. So they're going to like pay more or some of the bus companies around the, they get paid, you know, four months out of the year. So it's just a, it's just a huge turnover, um, in terms of, because they can't keep anybody. And they've tried everything, their insurance won't allow them to, their best candidates are retired structural officers. And, but they don't have a pool to go to, and they'll pay, you get these structural officers, you know. And then there's an issue with state licensing, because a lot, we have a lot of structural officers in Summers and Ed Field. And, and see, like, it's free field, but unfortunately that's, that's accused it. Um, and then they try to insure, um, mothers who would want to put their children on the loss with them. So that they drive buses, you have mother drivers. Yeah, but ensure there's no way to get those kids insured under any sort of.
So. We sure, and I talked about this somewhat last year at one of our athletic meetings that we had about. Could we get parents green light, we would drive kids to these events, get the buses? Yeah, like, like, parents going any. Is there? An option? And if we can't count on the buses. Is there a way to, we can get these kids to these events?
Well, my issue, we, we paid a hefty sum, sum to LPV E C to do a job that they're not doing. And I mean, that's my issue. And, and, and you know what? We, we, we can't ask parents to drive to Ma. You know what I mean? I mean.
Yeah, I agree with you, but if they don't have the bus drivers. The que- the question is.
I, I think that.
Are, do we, do we let the kids where it can't dispay the wage? Or do we come up with an alternative? So, LPVAC is a, or maybe we.
I don't know. We, we need to figure out a way. I do, I, I do.
We're gonna invite the head of LPVAC to our next.
You guys would love him. But I think we need to bring in, I think not just him, but I, I think that they're the director of, of transportation.
I think that, I think that the dark version of him.
Yeah.
I think he has a, his son on a pole a little bit more. But it's, it's more than just that, it's, it's. The, they are, they're using everyone that they can possibly think of to drive buses. Now, all of the mechanics drive buses, all of the monitors drive buses, all of the, the, the manager drives a bus. Of, um, the, the director of transportation drives a bus, like, it's in a horrid situation. I mean, I think I said.
You can fix it. We will, we will, I've talked to superintendent inviting director of LPVAC here to one of our, here in the, here in future.
Was that it? So it was, it was, it is LPVAC, um, sporting events are being postponed, so at one other towns. And then they're getting picked up too early.
Yeah, I mean, we, we know both C tech and Westfield vote, particularly Westfield vote coming from Brandon. Wait, Westfield vote. Or tech, or Westfield tech, got it, we got it.
Oh, okay, well then, yeah, let's get the director here. Okay. We want to make sure we've got the rationale justification for why this is happening. Because the answer is that some of the parents of the unions are, are unacceptable. Uh, okay, policy, we talked about that with the meeting, we've got some meetings set up. We will be working with Liz to try to conclude our policy experiment, get that over to her. Uh, buildings and grounds, I missed the last meeting. Um, we just had one recently where we had representative from sports, uh, proposal that we've got.
I was at buildings and grounds.
Give some presentation, you want to give a summary?
Yeah, um, we went over the new, um, he actually showed us, and Serena was there. Um, for the end, he actually showed us some drawings of what he was going to propose in terms of, um, the stadium.
The phases.
Yeah, the different phases and what would, I, I think realistically, we're looking at phase one, potentially phase two.
Okay.
And then being done with it, because I think in total, it was like nine, twelve million dollars for the entire project and what he was proposing. Um.
Well, we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Anybody's gonna.
And I need to, I need to confirm, because I don't think, I think the stadium, you know, I think that was like four million dollars. Just for the stadium itself, and I do not know if that include the lights, because there was a separate line item underneath the stadium.
Do we have a copy of that?
Yes, it's on a thumb drive somewhere.
A copy of that.
Yep. Um, but I don't think the lights were included and the lights were like another million dollars. Just about like. Alright, then the next phase was to, uh, which would kind of solve all of our problems for. Uh, not the long term, but it would help us greatly. It wouldn't have anything to do with baseball, unfortunately. Baseball would kind of be like phase two, if we got to phase two. Um, and that would be refurbishing all of those fields. Because lacrosse, um. Fields hockey, soccer, um. No, I'm just talking about the ones that play in the stadium.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, so that would leave out the ba- the baseball.
Baseball, sorry.
Baseball and softball.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't, I don't, what, what were they doing with softball? Because I don't saw baseball fields. Were they just using the baseball fields as the softball field?
No, 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 there was a plan for the softball field as well.
There was?
Um, yeah, there was something about, remember like the whole backdrop and, and protecting the cars in the street.
Yeah, I remember that, but I thought those were both a baseball field.
I thought this one over here was gonna be a softball field.
Yeah, baseball field, softball field, the softball field over here, they were talking about orientation.
Yeah, orientation and a kind of, and a kind of grass.
It was just one baseball diamond and one softball. Okay.
Alright, well, as we get that proposal, we can, a part of the, um, funds that we allocated to do this project. Included a presentation.
Yep.
So I will check, I will check, yeah, he's gonna present to the whole committee and he, he's, he's open to presenting to the towns as well. Uh, but I think we need to kind of figure out, okay, this is step one out of twenty. Is to get the information, find out what the potential costs are. The nice thing is that we've got this in phases, so we do have an opportunity to kind of do this a piece at a time. Um. Certainly, as I discussed before, I am not looking to put the towns where they're bearing the entire cost of this. I'm with, I'm with everybody, we're looking for fundraising, really concerned, you know, I mean, we break this up where everybody's got some skin in the game to make this work. Um, so once we get that proposal, I will touch base with him and find out where we stand, what the next step would be. And then what we'll try to do to get it to come to a program. Sound good? Right, uh, I have seen.
We have not yet to have our first meeting, um, the agenda did go out, uh, Jenny, remind me again, when's our first meeting?
Uh, next week.
Next week.
No, I'm sorry. Uh, what's the first Tuesday and I still don't, I don't know.
It'll be on, on the first.
Okay, so they are remaining on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Alright, bonus. Techno.
Although I do have a question, um, I believe that, um, Ben and Tyler was sort of in charge of that subcommittee. Um, so with Ben Bonn, I don't know if there is a replacement. Or, um, what the, um.
I have new vice principal may be able to be replaced.
I'm talking about the technology. The technology?
Yeah.
It would be garbage.
So, okay, so this garden, that's, that's taking over that, or that was running that to begin with? Okay.
I think that Ben took it on just when we were in transition.
Okay, okay, great.
Super, uh, advisory committee, they look at, we can start with that, a little, uh, T P D with the, the. Um, Southwick County, Missy Park, you got anything? Janu, Janu, okay. Athletics, we just met last week. Um, numbers are just under two hundred, we've got lots of kids participating. Uh, we had a very healthy discussion on a number of different items that we're, that we're looking at. Uh, with perspective fees and, uh, uniforms came up and talked about coaching. We've got full complement of coaches for all of our teams so far. It's been only brought up tonight. We have got some fantastic results going on so far. Um, Southwick is going to be, we'll all represent it when we get to later on in the season. We can start getting into Western Mass playoffs, state playoffs. Uh, none of the power rankings are out yet, it's too early. Um, but it would be exciting to see where we all stand. Um, like I said, we've got, we've got a voice soccer team who's well, they're still growing and, and. Do they mean they're, I don't know where we've got. Pardon? Yes, they do. We have, numbers are growing on the voice soccer, improv soccer, so they may be first to vote. Yeah, how they doing so very good? They beat somebody eight nothing. That's why they got beat the week before.
Yeah, I mean, typically, because I used to play, typically they could do like some better to have passable, um, hard teams.
Yeah.
But they look like they're doing good right now, um, yeah.
So on your athletics committee.
Yeah.
Um, do you also? Um do you also have the uh booster club representatives involved in that committee?
No, not yet.
They're very, very new. We haven't had that conversation, but we can do that.
I think that it would be worth um reaching out. I think, I believe there's only three that are sort of spearheading that, um three parents.
Um but we know one of them.
But, right. Yeah, exactly. But I think that involving them or at least one of them um on the athletics committee would be a good idea.
For sure.
Yeah, that's right. Um legislative liaison. Who's going in November?
Yeah, who's going in November?
Who wants to go in November?
Where is it?
It's in, it's in Cape Cod.
So it's always at the Cape, we know.
Go to the Cape, don't stay at the hotel where you're at. Get, get a ho- get a hotel offsite.
I will be there for work.
Oh. Oh, you don't want to, no, we don't want that, that's gonna be tough to do. Um I know a year ago, last year.
Yeah.
Did anybody want to go? You want to go back? Or Ted, you want to, I know you went like forty-eight times in a row. And then, does anybody else want to go?
I mean, I'd be happy to go back if nobody else was interested, but I do think that it is important to give people the opportunity. I know Ted's gone many, many times. Rob and I have each gone. Um so you know, it it is a, it is a cool experience. Um if uh if anybody is interested. So I I I took a Friday and.
Oh, yeah. All right, we don't need to decide this today. Let's think about that. If you would like to go, please let me know, so that we can get the registration set up. Uh and what we'll do is the goal would be the next school committee meeting, uh is we can identify who wants to go. And that way we don't get caught in a real high fee that we're registering like at the last.
Aaron, I have a quick question. But like when we got to um. Uh Mr. Fox's Southwood Capital Committee, he said, you know, we probably need to do it until January, and then alongside of his meeting. Seventeenth in January?
No, just January.
And then for instance, like where the legislative liaison is for the M A S C, can we just put November as the date that it's happening?
We good? All right, public comment? Nobody here? No.
Back to the spring of the country.
Uh all right, so old business. Anything for old business? Right, we've got the, and Aaron, I don't see a copy of this in here, but the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five committee revised meeting schedule.
You got one.
Okay, super, I just want to make sure. Um so we've, we've adjusted that to Mondays for the fall. And I will bring everybody up to speed. I take on some classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays for at least the fall. And I think in the spring for the next, definitely the next couple of years. Um so I reached out to see if everybody was open and moving with the Mondays. Um it's pretty much a consensus, because that works. Um the one challenge that we can address in policy, when we get back there, we need to adjust our policy to the strictly identifies. That we're looking to do in the first and third Tuesday of every month. Um we're gonna look at trying to set up a little bit more. Open language that gives us some opportunities to look at around, but we've, we've, we're able to adjust these, what we've done. But we're, we're gonna need to go back and address that policy just so everybody's aware.
And I believe we did um send um to our representative towns, the select board members, the adjusted the exception, right, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, she sent them up to Alstoria County, sending the select board members. Everybody get that notification.
The news media. Wait, Russ?
Um last thing I've done from a new business perspective, that I'm gonna piggyback on something that's only said in, they're gonna be having a. Um that they're gonna have a in-service coming up early with people about proper driving, proper yielding, proper everything. I want to make sure that we've got this out there. We've had some complaints, concern about parents driving. In a unacceptable manner at the high school. I want to make sure that everybody's aware and remind them that we have two officers now that are here on campus. Inappropriate driving on the school grounds is not gonna be acceptable. So this is their warning. Uh make sure that they're driving acceptable up there. We want to make sure. Drop off, pickup, you name it. We just want to make sure that everybody can pick appropriately and not speeding it or. Um you know what? That's a quick thing. Can we please get the new SRO of the high school to come down? So that we can get introduced officially to the amendment. Yeah, so.
Actually, the new SRO is a redwood of Southwood.
Yes. Yep.
They both. They both are redwood. They keep coming back.
Anybody got anything else for the business? You going?
No.
You good?
Actually, I will say, I think Miss Shorter was already planning on doing something with Fran, just to make sure everyone's clear about.
I just want to bring it up because it was top of mind and this is recorded and people can go back and look at it. So when stuff goes down down the road, they can't say they were born. Here we go.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, there we go.
There are those signs. I've seen like those signs that people come out there like. The MC Hammer song like.
All right, we're at the most exciting part of the night. I will entertain the motion to adjourn. Right, all the family.
Hi.
Great. Seven zero zero, thank you guys.